The magic clock on my iPad says it's four o'clock and Bob Roth ensured me that if I did not start on time, he would punish me. Make sure I don't get punished for seven years old. Good evening. It's the Wednesday, September 6th, 4:00 PM, Dr. Cog Board Work Session. We will all just call the meeting.
To order, and I will do what Connie tells me every time, otherwise she'll hit me. Ms. Garcia, would you do the roll call, please? Oh, now you want it.
So I wanted you to turn it on. Eva Henry, Steve Odoricio, Jeff Baker.
Here.
Elise Jones.
Here.
David Beckham.
Here.
Randy Wheelock, Sean Wood, Chrissy Panganello, Anthony Graves.
Present.
Robin Kneech, Kevin Flynn, Roger Partridge.
Here.
Gail Watson, Libby Zabo, Casey Ty, Bob Pfeiffer.
Here.
Bob Roth, Reenie Peterson, Larry Videm, David Spelman, Aaron Brockett, Matt Applebaum, Ann Justin, Lynn Baca, Rex Bell, Tara Radloff, Jeff Blue, George Teal.
Yes, ma'am.
Doris Trulard, Kerry Penelozza, Laura Crispin, Earl Holland, Richard Champion, Gail Christie, Rick Teeter.
Here.
Debbie Nasta, Catherine Whitman, Steve Conklin.
Here.
Joe Jefferson, Steve Yates, Jeff Deacon, Mark Gruber, Daniel Dick.
Present.
Lisa Jones, Laura Brown, Lynette Kelsey, Henry Ergot.
Here.
Lynette, is that you? Scott Norquist, Storm Glor, Sosha Karas Graves, Casey Brown, Ron Rukowski.
Present.
Mike Hillman, Brad Weasley, Stephanie Walton, Shakti.
Here.
Jerry Bean, Isaac Levy, Phil Sernanik.
Present.
Jacob, Jacob Lofgren, Larry Strach, Win Shaw.
Present.
Joan Peck, Gabe Santos, Ashley Stolzmann, Connie Sullivan, Dan Greenberg, Colleen Whitlow, Joyce Palazuski, Deborah Jerome, Sean Foray, Chris Larson, Kyle Malika.
Here.
John Dyak.
Here.
Sally Daigle, Gary Howard, Rita Dozal.
Here.
Heidi Williams, Eric Montoya, Herb Atchison, Joyce J., Adam Zarren, Deborah Perkins Smith, Bill Van Meter. Okay.
Okay, we're off and running. First item up on the agenda is the summary of the board work session. There's Attachment A in your package. Is there any comments, corrections, or questions on Attachment A? Okay, we'll move on, accepted. Next item on the agenda, Item 4, Public Comment. The Chair requests that there be no public comment on issues for which a prior public hearing has been held. Before the Board of Directors, each person will be allotted up to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who has a public comment they'd like to make? Seeing none, we'll move on. Steve Odoricio has been joining us now. First item up on the Item 5, Discussion of Focus Areas for the Draft 2020-2023 TIP. Mr. Rex and Company.
Thank you, sir, very much, and good afternoon, everybody. With just one public service announcement. Well, first on, I think we, I hope everybody agrees that we had a pretty good board workshop a couple of weeks ago. I'm getting a thumbs up from Arapahoe County, so that's good.
It was, it was great, not pretty good.
Well, I like that, I like that terminology better. Let's go with great. And I would ask you, if you have not filled out the survey, the post-event survey that Jerry sent out or Connie sent out, please do so. We got pretty good response, but we'd like to have the last few, if possible, so that would be fantastic. And really, in the comments area, you know, if there's anything that you, we're always looking to improve it, so there are ways. Don't be shy about sharing any comments you have about ways to improve.
Yeah, I thought your purchase of the third round of drinks was a bit much.
Thank you?
I think.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Right, so, so, yeah, so one of the, one of the plenary events on Saturday had to do with the TIP focus areas. And, and, you know, what we did as part of that, and you recall, the whole focus areas, and this came out of, you know, a couple of the white papers that the TIP Policy Work Group did for you all. And what we hoped to accomplish with that, with the, with the recommendation for you guys to develop some focus areas is, you know, that you, quite frankly, give a, have a, have a careful discussion and consideration of, of what you would like to do with the monies we have available in the next TIP to make life better in this region. So, so what we did, we went through an exercise at the board workshop, for those that were not present, called paired comparison. And basically, what that is, and Jerry's in the back of the room, he can talk about it for hours, if you like, but it basically compared each of the proposed focus areas against one another. So you compare the first one against the second, first one against the third, and then you come wrap it back around and you compare second against the third, second against the fourth, and you get the idea. And what this, you know, what the, the hope is through this exercise is that we begin to prioritize those focus areas. So what we did, we provided the, the board workshop participants with a list of nine potential focus areas which, which, you know, for your consideration as part of this discussion. And at, at the board workshop, we did ask if there were additional focus areas you would like to have for consideration in this exercise, and there one, was one that was added. The nine that we provided to you all are included in your attachment in the works, work session agenda tonight. And the fifth, the 10th one that was added was enhanced long-term mobility while reducing vehicle miles traveled. So there was 10 in total that were used as part of this matrices and part of this exercise. And at the end, when all was said and done, well, before I say that, I just wanted to point out that all 10 of these, and I made a point of mentioning this, and I think everybody, there was a lot of head nods during the workshop, that all 10 are important. It's not that any of them were less, any less important or not, but what, what is it the board would like to concentrate on over the four years of this next TIP to help, you know, try to focus your attention to? So when it was all said and done, the recommendation out of the, out of the board workshop were the three that are noted in your, within your agenda packet. And those were to improve mobility, infrastructure, and services for vulnerable populations, increase reliability of existing multimodal transportation network, and improve transportation safety and security. Those were the three. And at this point in time, before we get into the next steps for the day, I would have liked to ask if there were any, any comments, discussion, those that were present at the workshop or those that were not that had some questions of those that were present about the selection of those.
One question is sort of what happens with them now, and do, how much more detailed do they become? And then, in the future, I, I wonder if it makes sense to have sort of a, more of a conversation about each of the things we're voting on before the vote? Just because I think it can really matter if you've sort of flushed out exactly what you're talking about before you have the vote. And, and I think that the, having the specificity is important, so I hope we're going there in, in the future.
Now, your comment on, on the voting, you referring to the, during the exercise?
Like, so, I mean, it was helpful that you had the paper come out that listed each thing in, in a description. But, so, I'm really happy that the transportation for vulnerable populations ranked really high. I think that's great. I also noticed that we had just had a presentation on it and seen a video. And I, I think that there were some important, it would have been interesting to see if we'd had a little bit of flushing out of all those other subjects and then voted. I also felt a little bit uncomfortable that there was this time issue. We were coming up with criteria, but it was like Saturday afternoon, and there was a time issue, and it felt like a fast way to deal with something really important. That said, I don't, there were good things about it, too.
No, I appreciate the comments, no. You are right, I mean, there, there are time restrictions, obviously, in a workshop like that. We had three items, of course, and, and, you know, I mean, it really was, it's, it's to initiate that discussion, right? We want to try to pair, begin to pare down those focus areas for a more broader discussion amongst you all today and then ultimately, you know, at a, at a board meeting. So, no, I appreciate the comments, and I, I fully get it, yeah.
Other comments or questions?
I don't get a lot of feedback from my city on Dr. Cog events, but I got a negative one on this one. The question was rhetorical. Isn't VMT important to Dr. Cog? And I said, yes, very important. Then why did you hold your meeting in Colorado Springs? There were car pools or truck pools, as Mr. Atchison.
Free riders.
But, in any case, it was a lot of mileage added up any way you slice it.
Yeah, and, of course, that, that predates me, you know, and I, but I think it was, it was one of those events, you know, I don't know how long ago, Connie, we started doing it off-site, but it was an opportunity for the board just to get away. And it doesn't mean we don't have to do it. And that's one of the questions we actually asked in the survey, is what, if you, if you think there's merit or value in, you know, getting outside the region, off-site, and doing something. But that is not a prerequisite to this, to this deal.
And my comments would be equally applicable if we'd gone to Loveland.
Oh, sure.
Or anywhere else.
Yeah.
Other comments, Mr. Sernanik?
Just, Doug, in taking a look at the, the focus areas that we have, I know you boiled them down to very short pieces, which were the titles for each of these.
Sure.
But I think, once it gets to the board, having those paragraphs, because I think that first item, to me, also includes some aspects of dealing with the first and last half-mile for that vulnerable population. And I think that's, that's been that, first and last mile's been the, the nut trying to crack that is there. As well as the reliability has a nice paragraph that explains what that is. And so it wasn't just these quick phrases, but there was also additional pieces that at least went into my considerations at the workshop.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Brockett?
Yeah, thanks, Director Sernanik, for that. And then, what I would hope is, is we move it towards the board discussion, that we'd get more finely-grained detail of the kinds of projects that these focus areas might support. So I think some specific examples would help our discussion when we make a final decision on the focus areas.
Yep, we could do that.
Other comments? Well, I know that Elise and myself have been to four of these, probably. And I would tell you that, and kind of in response to what Mr. Rukowski was talking about, is we get people to get more focused by not being at home. We don't have people driving over for an hour or two and deciding they got to run over and open up the garage door for the handyman to come in or whatever. And I understand, he's absolutely right, it is vehicle miles traveled. But for, as much as what we're trying to do in that one event, otherwise, we're at the same place every meeting we have downtown. To get out of here and get people focused and stay focused and not be going back and forth, I think more than warrants answering the concern that anybody would have. But, well, if you're concerned about vehicle miles traveled while you go, it's very common for boards to get away from their normal workplace, so that they are focused and not distracted by what's going on. That's two cents. Ms. Jones?
I would agree with the Chair that it is helpful for us to go away off-site. It, I think in part because we also get a lot, I think, out of the social time that we spend in the evening together. And if we all went home and came back in the next morning, we wouldn't spend that. And it's important for relationship building. And I know how important that is for Mr. Dyak from Parker, because we just discussed how collaborative we're getting. And it helps to lubricate the collaboration, I guess. But I, but I think that the mayor has a good point about whether or not it's possible to actually hold these retreats and have lower VMT. And I would politely suggest a group bus or van pool, because we know that Dr. Cog's really good at that. We could all travel together, further collaborate.
Party bus.
Party bus?
Just saying.
But I, but, and I'm only being somewhat glib in suggesting that. I would also say that I thought it was a really good retreat. I think that we had pretty good attendance, and I think part of that was because we were discussing the TIP, but I'll take it.
Yeah.
I think the last two retreats in particular were very well thought out, and I, I think P and E get some credit for that, for, for helping shape the agenda, so, kudos.
And, and our numbers were up again over the previous year.
Yep.
And that's always helpful. And some people brought their alternates, which was also good to do.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions on the article before us?
That's the first part.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no more comments or questions on the actual proposed focus areas. The next step is to have a discussion today, just, and we threw a few questions out there, just, just for your consideration. In helping staff, as well as the TIP Policy Work Group, develop, you know, project evaluation criteria and the like, we would like to get your thoughts and some discussion on, you know, how these focus areas should now be used, now that we have them. What should they be? Should they be, as the first question suggests, a litmus test to, to project eligibility? Or should they, or should focus areas be used more as a guide for investment decisions? And if they are to be used as a litmus, litmus test, how many of those must a project comply with? All three, two, one, whatever that might be? We'd like to have some, you know, some, some discussion about that. And the other, other two questions, one relates to, you know, and that evidence in support of those focus areas from those, from those proposed projects, you know, how should they address those focus areas? Should it be, you know, more quantitative in nature, you know, by the numbers? Or should there be an opportunity, you know, to, to allow some opportunity there for a narrative? Or to be able to show more qualitative benefits and relationship to the focus areas? And then, last but not least, should the focus areas be different? Or the, or the utilization of the focus areas be different for regional share projects versus subregional share projects? And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll just leave it out there lingering like that to see if we.
Did you leave enough questions on the table?
I did, I believe I did.
Mr. Partridge? Any thoughts? No, it's the first person I looked at wasn't looking at me.
Well, do we want to start with the first one? Start, I mean, should it be a litmus test of some capacity, or, or should it just be used as a guide?
Mr. Sernanik?
I'll, I'll start off and jump on this one. As we discussed somewhat at the workshop, is, we need to be taking a look at the portfolio of projects that are there. And if you have a portfolio of projects that doesn't address any of these, but you may have a project that might be small and to the side, that might be something that will address something that's important, that someone wants to grab onto, that's out of Metrovision, I wouldn't necessarily disqualify that if overall, the portfolio, whether it's the regional portfolio or the subregional portfolio, does take a look and really gives these some gravitas that's there. And I, as I said before, part of my understanding to some of these is there's actually multiple items that get addressed with some of these focus areas, and how that works. In the end, though, we need to have quantitative measures that we're going to hold ourselves to in that performance. And I'm looking for the tech, to at least be in some position to say, how do we vet these on that criteria of actually having return on investment or quantitative such that the portfolio aggregates to something that is actually meaningful, if not optimal, in taking a look at the limited dollars that would, that we do have? And I'm, at least at the moment, of a mind that the regional and subregional should be measured on the same and that, with that same criteria that I just mentioned, so.
Yeah.
Shakti?
In terms of the return on investment conversation we had before, will that just be these criteria? Or, I mean, like, will it answer questions like, how well does this move people for the dollars spent? Like, I mean, will we get that kind of information as part of the return on investment?
It's Brad here. That's Brad's in back of the room. I don't know if Brad, if you want to say anything to this. But, you know, I think, Shakti, one of the things we're, we're finding out in some of the work we're, we're looking at with regards to the return on investment, is, you know, kind, the sensitivity of a project, right? Because of the share size of the region, you know, how much will one, one project move the needle? And what we're finding, not much, you know, with regards to some of the measurements or metrics that we might use. But as Phil suggested, you know, excuse me, Director Sernanik mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. That, you know, I think if we look at, you know, like a package of projects, for example, like at the subregional level, you know, once that package, our portfolio of projects is presented, we might be able to show a, we'd have more confidence in that return on investment of the package versus individual projects. Although there are certain metrics that, you know, that might, might be sensitive enough that we can show you. But I think that's the main thing we're really struggling with now, is to provide, what level that we can really provide you with some confidence. Brad, did I mistake that? Please give me thumbs up, so I must have done something right.
I got you, Elise. Go ahead.
It seems like just the number of people being moved, the amount it costs, the air quality impact, the, I mean, there'd be like, measurements from that project that.
Right.
That wouldn't be, it wouldn't be playing off big aggregate factors that you'd need a regional thing to look at, so.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, and there might be, I mean, we might be overthinking this, too, in some respects, right? There could be some more simplistic measures, such as that we can just lay them out on the table and compare, yeah. So you are right.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So the question's still number one, right? We're still on that question?
Yes, sir.
So, so my staff responded to this and felt that, obviously, the first thing out of their mouth was there's too many focus areas, which I don't think we've seen the narrowed-down version of that yet, right?
Well, this is, this is what's proposed, these, these three.
These three areas. Where, where, I'm sorry.
So it's the improved mobility.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one on the first page.
There, okay. On the first page, all right, sorry. Because they were looking back at the, the, the big list.
Yeah, yeah.
And that kind of got them all freaked out a little bit. But, but, so, you know, they, I think they look at, our staff would like to see it as more of a litmus tests and also more focused, so that they could respond and put their, our resources directly onto those focus areas. So I think we take a little bit different stance, maybe than some. But that, if you're asking us to answer that question, that would be our direct answer back. And then also, I think it kind of answers the second part of that question, but I want to make sure we stay on track on that.
Ms. Jones?
So, I'm going to get us off-track and answer all of them. I don't think it should be a litmus test. I think if you are comparing two projects and one meets a focus area and one doesn't, then the one that does would get elevated status, right? And I view these focus areas similarly to how we did the last TIP cycle, where we talked about first and final connections and regional equity. So we just, it, it was higher up in our mind. I say that assuming that we will have pretty clear quantitative criteria, and maybe some qualitative as well, guiding all projects. I think one of the, the good things that we did in the last TIP was, we said every project has to have some merit. We didn't go below, I think, a score of 50. Like, we, we weren't going to fund projects that weren't, weren't going to give us much bang for our buck. And in the world that, that I think a lot of us live in, we're getting more and more data-driven. We're more guided by metrics and by outcomes. And certainly, that's the direction in the federal transportation rules, that they want to see more on what we're getting for our limited dollars. And so I think it's really incumbent upon us, and I'll agree with Director Sernanik, we, we do need to be having some strong metrics, and they should be measurable. And we should be able to, as Director Shakti pointed out, be able to, to measure some of those on a project level. So that we can, with confidence at both the subregional and regional levels, say, every project in here is worth funding, and it will add up to something that's related to the goals that we've outlined in Metrovision and the goals that we have for our local communities. And I think it's important that we can say that about both regional and subregional.
Ms. Yaw?
Thank you. I really agree with what you said, Director Jones. I believe this should not be a litmus test. I would like to see it as a, a guide. But with that said, certainly, knowing that these are our focus areas, it would be most desirable to submit projects that focus on these areas. That's, that's really, I think, what, what I see as the goal. I would suggest that the projects come with some suggested qualitative and quantitative measures by which not only the, the board can determine and choose, but I would also like to see us go back afterwards and see how they did with respect to their projections. Very much like the, the traffic flow work that was done with City of Lone Tree Centennial.
Oh, yeah, traffic operator, yeah, right.
Right. I mean, what a fabulous, we save this number of minutes and this much, you know, that means that much fuel and time and all of that. I just felt that, that type of reporting out is meaningful, at least to me. And, and so I'd like to see more, more of that. So probably more quantitative than qualitative. And I would also like to see these flow down to the, the subregional share as well as the regional share, if, if at all possible.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Odoricio?
Thank you. I, when, when, when we discussed this earlier, we kind of talked, what is the, what is the purpose of the focus areas to begin with? And I think, I looked at it, the answer that I got was that we really provide a lot of our vision from the vision documents, and we kind of go down and drill down into a little bit more detail. And I think what this provided us was some, some high-level guidance and some kind of general values that we want to push for. But I think that what I'm seeing is, it makes sense as more of a guiding principles that we want to try to push as a group. Yet, I think that when you get down to trying to make something either a litmus test or a, or a real detailed criterion, criteria as a group, you want to be careful, because the whole purpose of what we're trying to do with the whole subregion in this is to allow, you know, Boulder to function differently than maybe Douglas, within their boundaries, and be able to prioritize some of the things that they care about, maybe a little bit different than what Douglas has for their needs. And I use these as examples, just because they're sitting to my right and left. But I'm, the point I'm making is that, what I'm getting at is that, that I think these should be high-level, value-based, aspirational-type values, and that we don't allow it to be something that, because it's already confusing enough, kind of where we, how we're going to use these. And I think we really need to allow the subregions the ability to have some flexibility to work with our own jurisdictions and address needs as they, as they are within those boundaries.
Thank you.
Ms. Dolzmann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree completely with Director Jones's comments. It made a lot of sense to me. I would just sort of like to emphasize a couple of points. So I think as we hone in on the measurements, irrespective of whether they're regional or subregional measurements, I think there should be a minimum score for consideration of projects similar to how it was last time. So there's flexibility within the different pools, but I think everybody should have to meet some kind of minimum standard to show that the projects are of importance to the region. And I think people will submit projects that can accomplish that. And further, I think it's important, and I, I think this is a concept that hasn't been really talked about much yet, but I think it's important that the different funding streams are considered at the onset, rather than at the tail end, as they've been in the past. So I don't think it would be equitable or fair if one subregion, for example, had all of the CMAC funding. So I think CMAC projects should be submitted across all the different types. So I think we should consider the metrics upfront that would make sure that that happens, so that one area isn't doing all the air quality improvements, and one area isn't doing all the congestion mitigation, or something like that. That there's a balance of projects across the pools of funding. Thanks.
Just a general question. Is there any municipality or county that doesn't use some level of measurement criteria to make sure that what you're providing your citizens provides a value on some level? On any project that you don't fund? I'm not aware of anybody that doesn't. So would we not? So would we not want to apply some level of criteria to anything that we approve here that it has to be of value? Not just a want, nice to have, but actually provides a value? And I think that's what I'm hearing from all of you in different, different tones. You want viable criteria, you want measurable criteria, and I think that's what we all do. We just may be doing it a little bit differently. But I think all of us are trying to strive for that, because at the end of the day, we have to account for the money that we authorize to be spent and to make sure it's done in a fair and equitable agreement and that it provides a value to the metro area. If it doesn't, then we shouldn't be doing it. Mr. Dyak, did you have a comment? I'm going to give you the chance, although I told you earlier I wouldn't. Yeah, I know. I'm going to break my own vow here.
Personally, I think, I think everybody has said it, Director Jones, Ms. Dolman, Director Shaw, Director Doricio, I think, I think that's absolutely correct. So I'll just continue to...
Did you say you agreed with me?
Absolutely, I did.
Could you say that louder?
I agree with Boulder County, Director Jones.
Mr. Rakowski.
Reference to CMAC funds. I would say that in some subregional areas that are very pastoral, such as Douglas County and Director Partridge's district, versus some heavy industrial areas where maybe you'd want that extra applied for CMAC because of the pollution that comes from that particular area. So I, I wouldn't say that spreading it totally out over all areas is necessarily the right thing to do. I would do it on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you pull up the three focus areas again? Just go back. I don't, I don't have any reservations about not tying these things directly and quantifying them. No litmus test, I think, is necessary, I agree. But I am curious about how staff sort of communicates these values. And what we're doing as a board to really motivate and incent our members to look after these values. I, you know, I think that it came out of the will of the body and we recognize that these things are important and where they make sense to slot them in, our TIP projects are going to do that. But, you know, wherever we can kind of motivate, inspire, and then quantify, I think we absolutely should do that. I'm confident that these sorts of exercises happen over and over again throughout the history of Dr. Cog, but these, you know, this is an area where we can really make an impact if we push one another and, I don't even know if I'm being very clear here, but I don't think we need a litmus test, but whatever we can do to communicate very clearly and try to motivate and inspire the staffs, the various jurisdictions around the table to take it seriously, I think we should. Thank you.
Mr. Odoricio.
I would agree. I still think that these are aspirational values that we need to push. And one of the things that we talked about when people were, over that weekend, we were concerned, some folks were concerned about having this, the two-tiered with the region and subregional distribution. And I remember, it became clear to me that there's still going to be checks and balances along the way, and this board is still going to have the final say on the allocation. And I think that's important to note, that we can still be holding each other, whether it's an actual quantitative criteria or if it's just simply through the qualitative working together collaboratively. I agree that we have to be able to push these values, and I think one of the things that makes me feel comfortable is that it's still going to come back to this board as a whole. And that people in this board are going to be able to look at each other eyeball to eyeball and say, are you meeting the goals and objectives that we have established as a region? And I still think that that's going to be important. I also would like to see, when you talk about whether it's going to be criteria, you know, one of the things I found that I love about Dr. Cog is it's, it's real big in the whole graphs and here's the divisions and, you know, and as a guy who came from organizational consulting, I really like that. So what I would like to know is, how are the criteria within some of the funding structures used? I mean, so sometimes the funding sources have criteria to begin with.
Right.
And that was also...
Accountability requirements, yeah.
Right. And so there's an element of protection in, within the funding source as they are. Then there's an element of protection within our planning process and documents, and then we will have a final say as a board. How do we kind of see all those coming together? And for me, that was sufficient enough to provide this kind of group accountability without having to create an additional level or additional layer of new checkboxes. So maybe we could talk about, how do all those different layers kind of function altogether? And then we could determine, is it really necessary to even add another layer? Because I would say it's not, but I mean, I still think it's important to talk about how all these pieces fit.
Right, wow.
Maybe not now, but I'm saying like, like, how does it functionally work? And this might be something that you send me to the intro to Dr. Cog Newbies, you know, group to talk about it, but you guys made me feel comfortable at that retreat because there's all these different layers of accountability and multif, and functional folk, group focus.
Indeed. Yeah, no, I think that fabulous comment, and you are right, there are different levels that will kind of regulate the process on its own, right? I mean, first and foremost is, is you all as being really protector and stuff, how we spend that money. I mean, it's, it's on you to make that determination on how this money's going to be spent and to ask those questions, you know, how does this relate back to our Metrovision plan, our regional transportation, those types of things. I mean, that is on you to do, and I don't think anybody's shy in the room about doing that. Now, with regards to the funding sources, that was other, a comment that was spot-on. I mean, there are certain eligibility requirements for that money that will kind of self-regulate it, well, will self-regulate. So, so, yeah, I mean, I feel pretty comfortable that there will be enough oversight with these focus areas with, you know, the criteria that's developed for the regional and subregional projects, and ultimately that everything comes back through the board as a filter that I feel pretty comfortable about, about the model that we're recommending to you all.
Mr. Baker, did I see your hand up? I thought I might have. Okay. Shakti.
So I feel like there's been a conversation about sort of this idea of a minimal score kind of thing, and is, is that going to be part of the plan or how's that?
If you so desire. But, but yes, I mean, I would suggest that, quite frankly, it kind of works itself out anyway in some respects because, you know, projects that don't score well are going to be down towards the end bottom of the list. It only becomes a discussion if you don't have enough projects, right? But I think that there's, you know, the, the metrics that we will apply, the criteria that we use, if a project does not score well, then I, you know, I think you guys will see that very quickly and it'll be discarded.
So are you saying, based on these three broad categories, a scoring system will be created and all the projects will be scored on that?
Well, this is certainly a milestone for us, right? Us, the TIP Policy Work Group and staff, in that we, you know, we were really waiting on developing criteria until such time that you guys decide on focus areas, so then we can fit the criteria to hopefully address a lot of this stuff that's in here. And we were going to do a lot of, you know, there was some, even if you didn't choose, like safety, for example, is a focus area. We were, we were federally mandated to include criteria associated with that. Associated with, you know, mobility criteria, you know...
So there'll be some scoring and it will be sometimes broader than these three, but focused on this, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I like the focused areas. We all have projects that we think should be in the focused areas. There's a lot of, there's a lot of data out there that will tell you where the most vulnerable focused areas are. For example, we were going to Carrata Springs last week or whenever it was, you know, once you got past Castle Rock, that was a two-lane highway that was backed up both directions, coming and going, coming through even the Denver area. We have areas that's, it's backed up in the morning and in the evening, going home and going to work. And we have areas that's backed up all day long. We have intersections that may kill two or three people a year. We have railroad tracks that need flyovers that, to help move the, the population through the Denver area. These are all focus areas. And I don't know why we can't use, let's say, the stat, the, the stats from CDOT or somebody else that's already got the same, looking at these kind of things, we can all get, put them together. We can put Dr. Cog with the C stat, with the CDOT focus areas also, and see that isn't the ones that we want to try to work on to, to help move traffic.
Mr. Partridge.
I think you're down to the D's now, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, however we score anything is, going into it is always important. Where the real scores matter is what happens afterwards. You don't get, when you take a test, you know, well, well, I think I'm going to get an A on this test, and the test comes back and that was not the score I got. So, that's a difficult thing, no doubt, when you're trying to gauge a project prior to it. Real way to do it is gauge it after it's done. I know that's not feasible in some respects, but I think we have to be very cautious we don't go too heavily on litmus tests because all good intentions may not prove out to be that way. That's where I think we, to some degree, you give subregionals the, the ability to work within their own region with each other. They know better. What do we push all the time? Local control. But what does that mean? It's very hard to, to measure that, especially prior to a project being completed, and that's what all these are, prior completions. And if we really want to be fair, we would set the criteria and then go look at projects that have already been done. Well, problem is, we didn't know, to a degree, those projects, the scoring of those occurred way years before us, were entirely a different group. So, all good intentions to, how do we decide what's the best way? But sometimes I think we get caught in the weeds and much better when we give local control to the subregions.
Okay, Mr. Brockin.
So, just going back to the question that Shakti was asking before, Doug, the, it seems like where we're headed is that there'll be a set of criteria for scoring projects, right? Some number of them.
Yes.
And then these focus areas would provide a focus for those criteria, right? They wouldn't determine the exact criteria.
Correct.
But they would provide a focus for, for you as you shape the criteria. Is that a fair summary of the direction you're heading?
Yeah, it is.
I think that sounds great, so, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Quite frankly, I'll be, I'll be honest, the three that were chosen, you know, we, we had already proposed and have discussions about criteria that would match any or all of these. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a long reach for us or a big reach for us to get there.
Mr. Mulca.
Thank you, Chair. Director Partridge made some great points, I believe. A question I do have, though, is in regards to the scoring criteria. I understand that these three things will be a part of that, and it sounds like there will also be some, some other criteria involved. A concern I would have, though, is how subjective some of that other material may become. And I know that you spoke about equity earlier, and especially, I think, when it comes down to location or region and if that's going to be included in any of this criteria or, or how that will be incorporated to ensure that, that that equity is spread around.
Yeah, I mean, that's a tremendous question. You know, I think that's something that, you know, we're beginning to have conversations about in the TIP Policy Work Group and how that might be handled with regards to. I think, you know, what we have, what we are proposing is that there will be some universal criteria that will, will have to be used within each subregion, and then anything above and beyond that, you know, we, it is our, it is our proposal that we would provide some flexibility then within the regions to make a determination on if they want to include additional criteria. And I'm not sure what that looks like, it's just more of a concept right now than anything. You know, to provide that, that local flexibility and be able to address those local values a little more. But there, you know, but, but I want to make clear, and maybe, I don't think we've been real clear, or I haven't been real clear about this in the past, is that, you know, it's, you know, the subregions will have to work within curbs in how they select projects. And that will be criteria that ultimately will be approved by you all before the subregions ever do it. But then, once that's done, they can include additional criteria that maybe, you know, maybe separates some projects from others, right, that, that they want to focus in on.
Okay, Ms. Jones.
I guess I, where I see the flexibility coming is in what those projects look like in meeting the criteria. Not so much that one subregion has to meet, you know, a criteria around air quality and another subregion doesn't, but that they both have to meet the criteria, but the projects could look completely different in how they do that based on what their community needs. So, is that an accurate statement, that the flexibility is around the project or the criteria?
I just don't know if we're there yet, Elise, to be honest. I'm looking at TIP Policy Work Group folks in the back of the room, I don't know if they want to hop up and add anything to this, but, I mean, I would suggest, I mean, but you can't control the types of projects that are submitted. I guess you can control the types of projects you ultimately select. What, or approve, yeah. So, I mean, I would, I just don't know if I can answer that yet. Looking at Mac, he's nodding.
All right, Mr. Rex. What else do you want? Because you're getting a lot of feedback, but I don't know whether we're actually directly answering your question.
Well, I mean, I, I would...
Tell me the staff's going up this way. Brad's back there trying to hide behind the chair, Odoricio, so nobody can see him. Mr. Teal.
You going to summarize it for us?
Yeah, wrap it all up. So, I mean, you know, we, we keep talking about these focus areas, but we're having a difficult time, obviously, you know, deciding what are we going to do with them. I wonder if we can't take a lesson from Jerry's exercise he put us through in the dying days of MVIC when coming up with the Metrovision, and consider these, consider grouping our hard criteria that we can qualify mathematically...
Right.
Beneath these three focus areas.
Right.
And just on the, just for the ease of being able to do it, and I know that might just sound like a, an analysis, a rational thing, is somebody saying? But it might just sound like an analysis tool for us, and understanding the, the criteria, just make sure they're grouped up so that when we're presented with those big spreadsheets that, everybody who went through this the last time, I think you guys remember, those very large metric spreadsheets, well, just get our criteria up under these focus groups so that it's not really a litmus test. It's not really a form of the scoring, but it's merely a means of analysis for us when we're looking at those, to understand exactly how those criteria should be fitting under these focus areas. That's my suggestion. And, so, I don't know if it makes your guys' job easier, but it would make my job easier.
No, definitely so. No, I appreciate that. I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, with regards to, and I'll just summarize what at least I've heard, I think the majority felt that it should not be used as a litmus test, as more of a guide for our development of criteria and the like. And, let me see here, and as far as, you know, quantitative evidence where possible, but I, I mean, also the opportunity for some quantitative or some narrative associated with, and maybe that's, you know, you know, it's a narrative about, you know, how it addresses maybe the outcomes or certain objectives of Metrovision, those types of things, for example. At least provide that opportunity to them. The one I feel probably less confident about from what I heard today is whether they should be, the focus areas should be treated differently at the regional level versus the subregional. And I think I'm, those that have addressed that have said that, I mean, I think it, it should be the same. Is that accurate assumption?
From the heads that I'm seeing move, most of them are going up and down, not going sideways.
Okay, great. No, that, that helps quite a bit.
Someone wasn't moving at all. Deep in thought. Mr. Odoricio.
I, I think what I was hoping that we were, I think what we're trying to say is, it's good to have those high-level, I just think that you're going to have criteria that may make, be different at the subregion, that we work on individually with our, within our subregion, maybe different than what this board does for those bigger shared projects.
That makes a lot of sense.
And I think that's where we need the flexibility to be able to do that at the subregion.
Mr. Brockin, and then Mr. Sinanik.
But, is, I guess I've been thinking about this a little bit different, Director Odoricio, that, that, I was thinking that we can hand off the, the money to the subregional allocations, but with criteria that the board agrees on in advance. And then, like you're saying, that every subregion can then shape projects in their own way to meet the needs of their own community, but with some, but carrying those shared values of the Metrovision down through criteria that the overall board sets. So I've been thinking about it more in that kind of way.
Thank you. I mean, you're kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
No? Oh, okay.
So I'm, I'm going to say two things. So one is wanting to make sure when it does come back to the board in a couple of weeks that the fuller paragraphs at a, at a minimum are included.
Yes.
Okay? Not to lose that. And secondly, as the subregions come back to the board, it's going to be, does your portfolio meet the objectives? It's not going to be on the individual... It's not going to be on the individual projects because there can be, within a subregion discussion, in my mind, there may be an exception, but that indeed it's going to be more on the aspect of, does that subregion's portfolio fit with the overall regional objectives?
Yeah, one of the things that I think some of you may be aspiring to is, look, we have the regional criteria that will be common to everyone. We have the subregional criteria that will be a flow-down from that that will be common to everyone.
Right.
But can you go beyond that at the subregional level and add some additional criteria over and above what the requirement that's passed to you through Dr. Cog is because of some specifics or some difference in your region that may not be the same as in another region?
Right.
I think you can, I think you can decide that amongst yourselves. Sort of what Steve was talking about is, there's going to be some things that are going to be particular to your region that do not have an impact on others. But it's just like you're passing on from home rule. You can add on to what state law requires, you just can't diminish it. And I think that's one thing we want to make sure is, we don't diminish the criteria that is governing everyone at a subregional level. You can add to it, but don't take away from it.
Well, and Herb, just to add to that, thanks, Mr. Chair, on this, is a subregion may find a better match to augment the grant that is there because it may be a collaboration among that subregion entities for that match.
Don't disagree. I had a hand, I thought it was moving over here. If not, I'll come back to Mr. Odericio.
I guess what I'm looking at is, we may have different vulnerable populations, and I think it's good to have a high level. I mean, some populate, some regions are going to have more veterans. Some are going to have more folks with poverty issues. We may define poverty issues differently for vulnerability. We may, maybe for us, it's below 20,000. Maybe for these guys, it's below 150,000. I don't know. But the point I'm making is, we also have different, you know...
That's just Rogers' neighbor.
Okay. You know, they, you have different forms of multimodal transportation, you know? Boulder might, in Denver, might be more built out, and so their multimodal may be focused more on bike and ped, whereas multimodal for us may include some other pieces of a multimodal approach. And then you look at transportation and safety. Adams County is, you know, very, going to be very much based on logistics and shipping and that kind of thing, whereas maybe someone else further away or a different region may not have. So, I'm saying we just want to make sure that the high-level values make sense, even if we're using these as kind of guides. But really, at the end of the day, we are different regions, and we have to address these things, and that's the whole point of having the subregion approach.
Mr. Teal.
Yeah, I'd really like to second what Mr. Odericio said, just because I think that is the case. I think you get down to the subregional levels, you know, we do have different needs. And so, I think, you know, keep the criteria there by all means, keep the yardstick the same from region to region, subregion to subregion for the whole region. But yeah, allow the subregions that latitude to recognize where their needs may differ from the others.
All right. I think we've had pretty good rounds. I think most everyone who's wanted to provide a comment has had that opportunity. Those who have chosen to stay silent have done it their own volition. Let me try to wrap us up as, no, you're not... No, 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 I'm coming here. Would you like to speak on behalf of Mr. Teal? Don't break anything. Go ahead, John.
That usually doesn't work out.
Mr. Dyak, did you, do you have a comment now?
No, I think it's, I think it's great discussion, observation. I greatly appreciate Director Odericio's comments, and it's just, it's, it was amazing just to see, watch him talk and see Jerry in the back nodding in agreement and, you know, right on the nose, so...
Giving thumbs up, yeah.
I truly appreciate your comments, and I think we're on the right path.
Now you started it.
That was, see, I have this problem with doing exactly the opposite of what I'm thinking, and not really. I just want to comment, when you look at these objectives, you've hit on every point that's very key. Every local community has a view of that objective because it's what they need. So, the initiatives or projects you bring forward could be varied, but they still relate and support that overall objective, or focus area, we call it, but it's written like an objective. So, what you're talking about, I have to go back to Brian's comment in the TIP policy work group. He says, "These give us a lot of flexibility at the local level." Am I accurate in that? And it's true. Gene and I had a similar conversation yesterday. So, you're on the right track. It has to be tailored to the community, but when you look at these, the way they're designed is high-level. Every community in here could interpret every one of those differently and still have an impact on it. So, that's the message, I think, and you're on it. Sorry, but thanks.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments that you'd like to add to staff at this time? Staff, do you have any questions at this time?
No, sir, it is tremendous. Thank you all very much.
Seeing that, there be no other business before the board this time?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What? We got another item.
Darn, I thought we was getting that. All right, Mr. Rex, go ahead.
All righty, so Agenda, Attachment C in your packet, Agenda item number six, is further discussion on the TIP regional share policy items. So, Steve Cook and I are going to tag team you a little bit on this. I'm just going to give a couple of quick slides here, just as some background on this model, because I know there's some new people that come in all the time, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. But, you know, there's really two models out there, right? There's the current, there's a centralized model, and there's a decentralized model. And that's basically it. And we interviewed probably, I don't know, 30 MPOs, you know, around the country to try to get the feel for how they allocate their monies. By far and away, the majority of those around the country, they use a more centralized model like we currently do now. There are those that use a regional, subregional model, most notably Seattle and Chicago to some extent. But really, Seattle's model is the one that we've used as kind of our, kind of our template and how we developed out this proposal for you all. So, just keep that in mind, because I have a few slides on the end that talks about Puget Sound Regional Council's process. So, the dual models we know is basically, there's, you know, there's two pots, and before we do a call for projects, we have this set-asides program, and you guys took action on our proposed set-asides at your last board meeting. Thank you very much. And there's other commitment sides. So, the other commitments, as you will see in future slides and in the allocation slide to the subregions, that other commitments is really wrapped up in the regional share. So, we really, what, in those other commitments, the projects that we have currently are, there's some fast-track investments, first and second commitments associated with that through past tips that we're finally rolling off the books now, let's say, as well as Central 70 project. We committed $50 million to that project, 25 in the current tip and 25 in the next tip. So, those will be part of that regional share pot. And then the subregional share pot. So, this is certainly timely, you know, as we've discussed, the necessity to establish these TIP focus areas, and this became, it was a recommendation of the TIP policy work group and the white papers that we wrote. We believe it is the responsibility of the board to establish those. It's all about, you know, we have X amount of money over a four-year period. What is it we would like to do with that for, that pot of money to make life better in this region? And some of the discussion we had today, obviously, will help us in shaping criteria for you all, and a set of sides I mentioned earlier. So, the regional share projects, what we're considering regional share, and we'll really flush this out here in a minute, but it's projects that have a significant regional benefit. And we've, as part of the TIP policy work group, we've provided you all with a recommendation on what we believe that is, and is primarily, you know, the eligibility for projects are those that are on the kind of the higher-level facilities within our region, whether that be on our roadway system, referring to primarily limited access facilities, or, you know, freeways, or on the transit network, kind of the fixed routes or rapid transit system within our region, and the bicycle pedestrian community, really more on the more regional corridors within our region. And we really hope that we can simplify the application process, because as we all know last time, my word, that was something else. I know, I know, it was my first tip process, as many of you know, and I had to read that thing three times before I could figure out what was going on. But it was, but, you know, with that said, I do believe ultimately we selected some pretty darn good projects in that, as well as spatially, they look good, as far as the equity amongst modes as well, I think was very good. So, the subregional share, so once the regional share projects, the call for projects is done, then monies, it's however much you decide that should go in this subregional pot will be proportionally allocated to a predefined geography. And we've defined that geography as counties, and that is similar to what they've done in Seattle as well, and quite frankly, it just makes the most sense. And, you know, one of the recommendations of the TIP policy work group is that that subregional share, we believe, needs to be meaningful. I'll let you guys define later on what meaningful is, but, you know, we, in order for them to actually go through that process, that administrative process, it needs to be meaningful enough for them to take that on. And we also are in agreement, the TIP policy work group, that the, how the money should be proportionally targeted to the, to each subregion should be based on a combination of population employment and person miles traveled. And this is very similar to how we've, well, it is almost exactly how we distributed the geographic equity last time, right? Close. Yeah, it's simplified, is more simplified probably than what we did last time, but quite frankly, any combination of that weighted any different way, it really made very little difference. So, the TIP policy group, work group felt comfortable in a combination of those three, weighted equally. So, let's talk about the governance real quick. You know, so in the subregional forum, each subregional forum, they will, will be required to invite every community within their subregional forum, whether they're a Dr. Cog member or not. We cannot discriminate against communities that are not voluntarily part of Dr. Cog. So, any community that is within, say, Adams County, that are, I don't know if there are any within Adams County that are not members of Dr. Cog, thank you all very much, that they would have to receive a solicitation asking them to participate. They may choose not to, but they would at least have to provide them with that option. And we would require that documentation that you did so. And so, every community would be invited to participate, and they would help you in drafting, you know, coming up, finalizing your criteria, as well as the selection of projects for a recommendation back to the full board. It is also suggested that CDOT and RTD be non-voting members on those committees. And, but, but again, ultimately, that's up to the decision of the subregions. But that seems to make a lot of sense, because quite frankly, you know, a lot of the roadways, well, certainly some of the most congested roadways within the region are on state highway facilities. And on the board's role, and I think this is obviously very important, and it's something that Director Odericio and others have mentioned, that, you know, we, this process is such that it, everything flows back to the board to make an ultimate decision. Subregions do not have the autonomy, don't have autonomy to make their own selection on projects. Ultimately, the board, a collection of regional leaders, has that authority, and it is, and it's on you all to make that determination on making sure that those projects, or portfolio of projects, as Director Sinan mentions, and I think makes a lot of sense, are consistent with MetroVision, the regional transportation plan, and the focus areas. And as a result of that, you know, I really think that the process seems, you know, it makes sense. You can see, you can't really see the arrows here, but everything flows back to the final project selection, and decision is with the board.
Doug?
Yes, sir.
Question?
Yes.
With regard, the subregions, we have counties for which there are portions of counties that are not in the region. Are those also required to be invited, and are they participating?
Now, when you say counties not within the region, do you mean, you mean that there's some, some entities that are half in one subregion, half in another, or?
No, take, take Eastern Arapahoe County, or Weld County.
And, no.
Where there's a, where there's a portion of that that is within the region, and some jurisdictions within the region have chosen to participate, but there is, take Weld as the example, there's a big part of Weld County that's not in the region.
Right. The answer is, no, it's all project-driven, right? So, the monies has to be spent within this geographic boundary, which is the MPO boundary, right?
Right.
So, for example, like Clare Creek and Gilpin County right now are not part of that MPO process. They're part of the Dr. Cog larger process, and we do transportation planning for them, but they're not part of the allocation of monies, the distribution of monies. So, for example, so Weld County, as you mentioned, only projects within the boundary, Southwest Weld, that are within that boundary are eligible. So, they would be invited. Quite frankly, Southwest Weld would have their own pot of money, because they would be a separate subregion.
But I think to clarify Director Sinan's question, the communities that are not within the Dr. Cog boundaries would not be a part of the county?
Correct.
Yet, that's...
Yeah, like Steve just said, Greeley, for example, would not be.
Could we clarify, but Weld County, which doesn't sit at this table, would oversee that conversation?
Well, they're dues-paying member of the MPO.
But they don't sit at the table, but they would still run the subregional allocation for those?
Yeah, as currently proposed, yes.
How interesting.
Now, they sit on, they sit on the, our Transportation Advisory Committee, but they have not, they have chosen not to participate at the board level, right, Connie?
Okay, hang on.
I mean, the communities within Weld County, yeah, I mean, I think that's an important point that Steve just raised. The communities within Weld County, within Southwest Weld, they participate at the table, the Dr. Cog, but the county, the incorporate, yeah, the unincorporated county government does not.
Okay. Hang on, I got about two more ahead of you. Ashley, go.
Thank you. Could you clarify the process, and I apologize if you've done this, for communities that are in multiple counties? So, for example, are you going to sort of redraw the counties since it's County Little C and put people in one pool so they're in one subregion and their jobs and employment go with them, or is there some other approach?
No, the way it's proposed, I mean, it's all project-driven, right? So, like, for example, so Westminster, that's a member of two, maybe three counties, right? Three? Two? Yep. Chairman Edson said it was two. Yeah, Adams and Jefferson. Aurora's three. Yeah, definitely so. So, they will be invited to serve on both subregional forums. Now, the projects they submit to each subregional forum would be specific to the county boundary that they're in.
And so, the jobs and population are counted by county?
Correct. Any other question?
Yeah, we have up next, Ashley, you're done, so Shakti, right?
I was just confused. I think Elise said something about the county runs it, or, and what does that mean?
Yeah, let me clarify that. I, you know, I think when we talk about counties, the subregional forums being the county, it's county small C, it's not county, the government, government entity. Once the subregional forum, once they come together, once the invites are out, and you guys meet the first time, you all will decide, a chairperson from that group, to basically, you know, to run, you know, to do whatever, to run the meetings. And who handles the administration of that will be, will be a decision of that subregional forum. You might decide it might be some community within the subregion, or it might be the county, it's up to you all. But the money does not flow to the county.
Thank you. And then, in terms of the breakdown between, of the funds between counties, you're just looking at the part of the county that's in the region.
Correct.
Mr. Flynn.
Thank you. And maybe I missed this, but did the working group discuss what would happen if the board, the ultimate decision-maker, turned down a subregional project? What happens to that allocation? Does it go back to the subregion for reallocation to some other project? Okay.
Yeah, it does. I mean, Director Flynn, I mean theoretically, that's what happens. I mean, we haven't, we haven't flushed that out in our policy document yet, but I think that would be my recommendation to the TIP policy work group, that that money still stays with that subregion, they would just have to come up with another project that you all collectively feel more comfortable with.
Okay, did the work group discuss that?
We've had some... We've had some, maybe cursory discussions about it, but we're not far enough along in those discussions yet.
Go ahead, Deborah.
So, I was wondering, what happens if there's a project that goes across two subregions? Then, does that make it regional, or does that mean it's, the two subregions have to agree? And then, the other thing is, could you discuss, under this model, what the governance is for the region? Because I didn't see that on the slide.
Well, to answer your first question, I mean, theoretically, it could be both, right? I mean, depending on the, the size of the project we're talking about, if it's on an interstate facility, for example, it would be a regional project. If it's a, you know, what is deemed to be eligible only at the subregional level, I would, I would, first of all, I would say that that, those projects would be looked upon highly, those that cross regional share, subregional share boundaries. And I think we would even, probably even encourage that as part of, you know, some statement within the document. But, yeah, I mean, those, those projects can be submitted. I mean, I think that's, that's part of what we liked about this, this concept, is that there's an opportunity there for collaboration, not only within the subregion, but also among subregions.
Any other questions?
Oh.
The second part of my question.
On, on the governance of the regional? Yeah, so, that, that's something we'll probably have a larger discussion about at some date, but there's really two options with regards to the evaluation of projects that come in, whether the full board wants to vet those projects as, as a full board, or if they want to establish a subgroup of the board to do that initial vetting, and then provide those recommendations back to the full board. It's, you know, it's, it's really, again, that's up to you all, how involved you want to be in that, but those, those are the two options that I see.
Any other questions? Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, just have a quick comment. I, I wanted to thank all of the members for taking time to address my many, many questions over the board retreat weekend. I was basically a vocal skeptic about the regional versus subregional, and part of that, frankly, was due to my own ignorance about the infrastructure and process that we were putting in place around this. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that I am supportive now of the regional and subregional. However, I have open questions, and I look forward to discussing those open questions. So, the criteria, that Director Sinanik mentioned earlier, I'm very interested to see what the criteria will be that governs both the regional and subregional pots, because I think there should be some continuity there. I'm, I'm interested to see what that back and forth looks like for approval, and I'm also very interested, of course, in the split. I, I still think that the current split that's being proposed is aggressive for a, a new program that we're kind of rolling out, and this is a bit of an experimental phase, but I did want to make sure that I was clear with everyone, that I appreciated so much your time, and that I'm back now off the fence, on the other side with you, but want to work through those details. Thank you.
I get it. No, thank you.
Okay, and I just have a quick comment. I do, Elise brought it up, but the Weld County, I think we just, can you just iron that out? Because I'm not sure the peanut butter spread works. I, just in my opinion, I'm not sure why a county would then govern over, because when we're looking at IGAs, I shouldn't say govern over, but when you say counties, we're looking at IGAs, at least we have some IGAs already started on this, I don't know how many communities have started that. But I would assume it would be whatever collective community in Weld County, whatever they want to call themselves
Right.
will be the ones to...
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's true.
Okay. Subweld, yeah. Rita.
So, I've been trying to understand if Boulder County communities could ever submit a regional project, based on this definition, and it looks like we can't. So, and, you know, because of, the only thing it looks like we could submit is if we were doing rapid transit system guideway facilities and stations, or the bike way, because it's long 36. But 36 is basically done. So, we're kind of out, if you leave this definition here, and I don't like that. You know, I think we should be able to, if, you know, if Ashley and I have a project that will help our communities in Boulder County and other communities within Boulder County, I want to make sure that I can compete for, or submit projects for the regional pro, money, or otherwise, we need to put more money into subregional. Because right now, I can't see where I could actually submit a project that would be considered regional.
I think the proposal is that the subregion would have more money, right now. I mean, we haven't got to that point.
We haven't gotten to that point, but given what I'm seeing here, is you've just thrown us out, and we can't even compete at a regional level in Boulder County.
Assuming you're going after regional projects, right?
I'm just saying that for regional money, I can't compete for that. I might have a project that fits all of the focus areas precisely, but I can't, and when you do the call for regional projects, it won't fit into the requirement that it's long 36, because 36 is done.
Right. I mean, I will say that, you know, again, this is a recommendation of TIP policy work group. I mean, and I think what we had hoped to accomplish with this is that, you know, we wanted to, we want the regional pot monies to go to projects that are deemed to be regionally, regionally significant, right? It moves the greatest amount of people. I don't like using that word anymore.
That, to me, should be the definition then, rather than particular highways.
Well, but we had to define, we had to define eligibility of that project, right?
I'm just saying that it precludes the opportunity to compete for some of those funds.
I mean, they're possible...
I'm not saying it, you know, I'm not saying it's, it will, it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that it, there, all this discussion about regional, I can't even compete for regional money.
No, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's good, it's a good segue into the next section that we're going to talk about here in a second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Whoops. So, I'm just kind of checking in on this. What I heard at the board workshop is that there is communication with the, with Seattle and primarily, but other places that, that have at least some experience with this, and I'm assuming that, and I would like confirmation that, with these open questions, I mean, we have a lot of questions, we have a lot of open questions, that you would, you would be looking to, the experience of, of people that have been doing this, and helping us understand what, not so much what their advice is, but what their experience is.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
No, definitely so.
Because I feel like we need some grounding here.
Right. No, very good.
Okay.
No, I, I agree with that, and, you know, quite frankly, I'll throw it out there, I mean, if it helps, you know, maybe we can even get them on a call, or invite them in, or something like that, that helps sometime down the, down the road. I will say, we've been in constant contact. I'm sure they got us on, they, they got us on caller ID, and they let it go to voicemail at this point. But, um, but they've been, they've, quite frankly, they've been very welcome. I mean, I, you know, Todd talks to them all the time, but not only at the staff level, we've reached out to, to, to communities as well that have participated in this process. Specifically, we actually have one person in our region now that, that took part of this, in this process back in Seattle, and he's the, he's the new city manager at, at Littleton. And I've had a couple, couple meetings with him to talk about this, and...
So, do you understand what I mean by, we need some, some grounding here?
Sure, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I mean, I'd like to reinforce what Rita said, because we're in Cass Rock, we're kind of in the same boat. We straddle I-25, yet some of our needs that would even be associated with I-25 may not truly be regional across the entire region, but we do have needs that connect us to Parker, that, you know, at a subregional level, you know, we've got 85 coming out of the north end of town, that, you know, really provides connectivity to the western half of our county. And so, yeah, I mean, even us, on I-25, I still say we have a lot of needs that are actually probably more subregional in nature. So, the idea of making sure we do weight the subregions appropriately, so that true projects can be done that are going to make, have an effect, quite frankly. I mean, I, I definitely speak in favor of that idea, and probably selfishly, the way you did.
It wasn't selfish, it was just trying to understand, if we are competing for projects that get us the biggest bang for our buck, then some of those might be smaller regional, but they're very regional impacting, you know, not just subregional impacting.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it might help if, if Steve, I'm going to ask Steve Cook coming up here in a minute, to just go through these next slides, because you asked for some additional information at the last meeting that we're, we provided to you all, and I'd like for Steve just to walk you through those, those, that information that you asked for for discussion.
All right, so, let me, what I show is Ms. Jones, Mr. Dyak, Mr. Brockett, and Ms. Stolzmann. Can you guys hang on for just a minute, and let's get through this, and then we'll come back to you.
That was my comment. We, people want to have that discussion, so, let, why don't we finish the presentation?
All right, thank you. I am Steve Cook with the Transportation Planning and Operations Section, and what we're going to be talking about here is, I'm glad this slide was up here previously, is the middle box, we're talking about the regional share here. So, we've had a lot of talk here today about subregion, region. At the moment, we're just going to be talking about the, the regional share, and I'm going to bring up the, this, okay, how far down do I got to go? All right. This was presented to you initially at last month's meeting, and it was a recommendation from the TIP policy work group, and as Doug mentioned, you asked us to bring back some further information, and probably most importantly, some clearer maps. A lot of the maps that we had in the last rendition of this had extra information on there that really wasn't needed. So, we got a little more specificity to what will be eligible on the maps. So, this table, which was in the last one, is pretty much the same, other than some of the ID numbers and figure numbers. So, I think it'll be good if we kind of get into the maps, maybe go through them sort of quickly, and then come back and ask, but I don't want to prohibit any, you know, technical questions or anything, I don't want to do that by any means. The first map on here, and I'm going to go into our, where's our control minus, is under the subject of rapid transit types of projects, and there's basically three different types of facilities that were in your attachment, and these are the, it got confusing, we had a lot of maps and things, these are the maps, and this was Figure A, within your attachment to, we apologize for the quantity of maps and attachments in this memo, but there's a lot, a lot to cover. So, the first subject area is the rapid transit type projects and locations that would be eligible, and the types that we have on here are the rail system, bus HOV lanes, and what's noted on here are the express or managed lanes, if there's specific transit physical components to them. So, even like the North I-25 section in Thornton, there's the transit underpass and types of specific facilities that kind of enhance that managed lane there for transit service, and likewise, along US-36. So, that's the geography of eligibility, and I want to stress the types of projects that we're assuming are eligible. It's not only new projects that complete sections of these various transit guideways, I'll call them guideways, which basically means some type of facility that's specialized for the transit vehicles. Right out to our door here, the bus lanes on Lincoln and Broadway, in our technical world here, that is a type of transit guideway. So, there's a physical, new projects to complete things, but also operational projects that may improve service, the facility, the operations of that facility. So, I don't know if there's anything out there at the moment. So, that's part of the flexibility under transit, is that if there's an operational improvement along any of these, that could be proposed as part of the regional pot. So, come back to this, to the page. The second piece, which is the eligible bicycle corridors, and one thing I want to stress with this map and a couple of the others, primarily this one, it's going to be, these are the maps at the moment, but we'll be going through a plan amendment process over the next six months, so, really, what it's going to be is if there's any minor amendments to any of these, it's the version of this map as of next, let's call it next March or April, if that's adopted, is what'll be used. So, this is just showing what the current one is. And for this one here, it's, what was identified are these geographic corridors for, of these bicycle facilities, these significant bicycle facilities, but that the types of projects eligible, once again, could either be completing sections of these that might not exist today, you know, there may be a gap in some of these, or, once again, what we'll call operational, or things that significantly improve an existing facility. So, if there's a part here where a red line on a road crosses a busy highway, crosses Parker or Colorado, and you want to put in an underpass, it's proposed that that would be eligible. So, I think there may be more eligible than, than, than you may think. So, it could be either completing sections of these, or something that does a significant operational improvement, which will probably also mean a safety improvement, in all likelihood. The next one here, before I get into the roadway eligibility, we're going to do a very, very quick 101, bringing that, one that was just up. What we'll be talking about, and, so, I'm just zooming in here, just so we can see those categories there, is a 101 of the types of roadways that are on our regional system, because we're going to be recommending the types of projects eligible on our freeways, which primarily are, or not primarily, the highways in red. This regional system was approved by the Dr. Cog Board a couple of years ago as part of our 2040 Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan. And so, we have our freeways, also our toll authority highways out there that we highlighted in yellow, but those are public highway authorities with their own toll revenue money. Freeways, obviously, those are our busiest highways. We've got, the traffic volumes on our freeways can range from, you know, 15,000 or 20,000 cars a day, which is like 30,000 people out in the rural areas, to the heart of Denver, where we're talking about traffic volumes of 250 to 300,000 vehicles a day, which equates to, you know, 300,000 to 400,000 people being carried in those vehicles. So, these are our, are obviously our highest volume facilities. In Gold are our major regional arterials, and you'll see in a minute that we made, it was proposed that those be eligible for the regional pot. And so, those are our kind of second-tier highways, such as Parker Road, US-85, Longmont Diagonal, up in the north, US-85 to the north, and those are our really main regional connecting arterials. You know, there are, are surface roads that have occasional traffic lights, unless you're on Colfax or Colorado, which have dozens and dozens of traffic lights. These roads will have anywhere from 15,000 to 17,000 vehicles a day, which equates to up to 100,000 people being carried on a, on a roadway like Wadsworth or Colorado Boulevard. Those are really our two busiest surface streets.
Just, is, to make the determination, is it the amount of use that differentiates?
Yeah, when those were determined years ago, it's, it's, it's two pieces. It's amount of use, it's kind of their regional connectivity, so you have to see some of these, they kind of collect, connect broader areas. Obviously, 285 in, in Jefferson County, as you get further out towards Bailey, a place like that, your volumes are pretty low. I know Sunday afternoons coming home, back up traffic, you, you wouldn't believe what I just said, but generally speaking, it's lower volume compared to a Colorado or a Wadsworth, but it's a really important connection, a statewide connection, you know, as a matter of fact, for that, US-85 up north. And it's almost like looking at old-fashioned, I'm going back in time to my Rand McNally roadmap collection, which nobody does anymore, my kids are like, what's that piece of paper you got there? It's like the old maps, what was the book years ago, Blue Highways, you know, it's kind of your tiers of highways that you would see on an, on an old roadmap. So, that's the major regional arterials in, in Gold, and then in blue, which is the bulk of what you see on our regional roadway system that you approved, are our principal arterials. So, that's our other, you know, subregional connecting roadways, you know, our busier streets within your communities, you may have traffic on there, you know... streets within your communities, you may have traffic on there, you know. Probably the lowest volume one is like Peak-to-Peak Highway up in here. It's probably 3,000 cars a day, which is, might be 3,500 people, you know, compared to some roads on here, University through the city with 40,000 cars. But Peak-to-Peak Highway is important because it's a key connector from a regional standpoint. And these are spread throughout the area, many of them. If you look at this entire system, I don't have the exact number with me, but of our total amount of traffic in a day, probably 75% of it, of our VMT is on this system here. So this really is the bulk. So with that quick little 101 is there, now I want to go back to our attachment tour. We had the listing of types of eligible projects. So on our freeway system, on our freeway system map, which is Figure C, two types of projects that would be eligible. If it's a capacity project, now I want to stress the difference that we have in our regional transportation plan lingo between a capacity project and an operational project. A capacity project basically is if it's widening of a road of more than a mile in length, might be a new road, we don't have too many of those at the moment, but it's mainly widening projects. If you're widening more than a mile on a freeway, that is designated as a capacity project. And by federal law, that has to be pre-identified in our fiscally constrained regional transportation plan. So at the moment, in our fiscally constrained plan, it's really just these segments with the blue markings that are currently eligible, that would be eligible for a capacity project in the regional pot. What we have mentioned in previous meetings is that operational projects that may be proposed can be anywhere on the freeway system. So an operational project is more like a bottleneck point, if you're just extending an acceleration lane a little bit, or extending a lane, an auxiliary lane between two interchange ramps. There are types of operational projects, they're more the spot improvements, less than a mile. Those are eligible, those would be eligible under the current proposal, anywhere on the red freeway system here. What's the next map? That's the freeways. Another thing that we show are managed lanes, of which the blue are on freeways, and the greens are some of our arterials. These managed lane projects have to be identified in our regional transportation plan, because they're more than a mile long. So these are all identified in the plan. The next element that's in, was in the attachment that was presented initially last month, is railroad grade separations. And what was proposed through the work group was that any bridge or tunnel, I guess, where there's currently a railroad crossing of any facility on our regional system, which really is the principal arterials and the major regional arterials. I don't think we have any rail crossings of freeways in our area. I hope not, and I can't think of any. So this would be something like in our VADA several years ago, the Grand View, Wadsworth rail crossing would be a type. And those are identified on this map in the red, kind of looks like orange up here, but in the red dots, I think the red triangles also. So those would be eligible if a sponsor had a project for that. At the last work session, it was, there we go, it was recommended that the major regional arterials, that we bring the information back to consider making the major regional arterials eligible for the regional pot, our regional share. So if you remember, originally, the TIP Work Group said, anything on the freeways should be eligible for regional share funds. It was suggested by this group, oh, shouldn't we consider the major regional arterials, which were our streets and highways that were in gold? And so we went back and looked, and we brought these maps to you that are in the attachment of 1, 2, 3, 4, basically five, I think there's five or six locations in our current fiscally constrained plan that would be eligible for capacity projects. So we got a couple on 285, US-85, the Colfax and Diagonal, which essentially are the managed lanes. Those would be eligible if you wanted to include major regional arterials for a capacity project. If you wanted to do an operational project, it could be anywhere on this gold, and I guess the blue overwrote the gold, anywhere on this gold system, if there was a intersection project. That's a type of operational project, if you add turn lanes at an intersection, maybe to help reduce crashes. And I think, oh, there was, then one other thing that is in, when you asked us to come back with information on the major regional arterials. Last month, we presented information on the past couple of TIPS of the projects that we funded in the last few years, about what share, if we use the current freeway eligibility, remember last month, but the two, we did two, we did two different sets of TIPS. And so last month, we presented to you that you took the freeways and bicycle system projects, were about 35 and 22, you averaged, about 29% of the projects in the last two TIPS were in that freeway and also the bicycle, but primarily the freeway system. When we include the major regional arterial and look at the projects of the last two TIPS, it goes up to those numbers in red, which are like 40% and 50, you put those together, it's about 45% of the last two TIPS would be freeway projects, MRAs, and those couple of bicycle projects, which from a monetary standpoint were pretty small. I guess we're kind of surprised by our memory, that there's actually been quite a few major regional arterial projects in the last couple of TIPS, on Wadsworth, Foothills Parkway, US-85, so actually quite a few in the last couple. So with that, if we want to go back to any maps, or if you have any specific questions?
Before we go back, we have approximately 20 minutes left, and we will be adjourning at 6:00, because PNE is going to start meeting at 6:00. So we've got about 20 minutes left. And I'm going to go back to the list, Ms. Jones, you're up first.
Well, I didn't have a question, but more a comment, then, at the last meeting, a number of us talked about adding major regional arterials to basically expand the opportunity for folks at this table to suggest a regional project, under the theory that regional projects, bigger return for the region, and really cross-jurisdictional. And it would appear that the data that you provided us would suggest that if we did expand the definition, we might also want to expand the amount of money in the regional pot to be somewhat more to accommodate that increased demand. And I guess that's something I think that we should take a look at.
Mr. Dyak?
Yeah, I was raising my hand for a different reason, but with the new information, narrower the better, bigger the better. So, I mean, to me, the arterial, good information, but I would prefer to limit, limit the scope of regional. And to me, if this has gone through the TIP Work Group, and they've all blessed, that, is that correct, Director?
Blessed what?
Well, the, you know, the crossings, the railroad crossings.
Oh, yeah, all that. Yeah, that was in their original TIP Policy Work Group proposal. The only thing where they differ is the inclusion of the major regional arterials. Their recommendation is still their recommendation, and that does not include the MRAs.
And then in terms of trails, I mean, to me, I guess, you know, for me, I would like to get some more information in terms of characteristics or criteria as to, you know, I don't think a $1 million trail gap is regional. So I would need more information on that, and, you know, still, Peña Boulevard Airport facility, I don't think it's a regional road.
Mr. Brockett?
Yes, I was going to address these issues in response to Director Dozel's comments, because I think without the major regional arterials, many communities, I think, will be in Superior's situation, which is that there's no projects that they can propose, because it really is a pretty limited set, other than maybe the railroad crossings. So I think, but those major regional arterials, I think, absolutely do provide a regional function, so I'd really love to see those included. I also appreciate the inclusion of the operational projects as an opportunity. That's the kind of thing that we focus on in the city of Boulder, and I think it's beneficial to the whole region when we treat, deal with those bottlenecks, and not just focus on adding lanes. So I like this proposal.
Ms. Stolzmann?
Thank you very much. So early in the presentation, Director Rex was talking about the previous commitments, the FastTrax and the I-70 previous commitments, that they would be part of the regional pool. And I would instead favor that those are set aside, I didn't realize that in the past. I think those should be, those are things we've committed to, I think they should be off the top, similar to other commitments, and not part of either pool. That's just a minor point. Just sort of for the larger picture, Louisville and myself are supportive of more funding going to a regional pool. When I heard different people talking about it, someone said, these are the areas that move the greatest amount of people, these are the projects that have the greatest impact on the citizens. I mean, these are the kind of words I heard people saying. And when we talked about it as a community, it's like, this is the Denver Regional Council of Governments, we should be trying to work on projects that impact the region in the most significant way that we possibly can. So I think we need to make sure that we have a substantial amount of funding go to the regional pool. And then I'm also supportive of opening it up. And if you have a project that can compete and can score well, and, you know, then even Louisville or Superior could demonstrate, yeah, this is going to have this kind of VMT reduction, this is going to have this kind of impact on life, and we could compete against a Denver if we can prove it, if we can show that it has the same kind of impact. If we can't, so be it. I still think the sub-regional share is an important piece that can augment the regional collaboration, but I think that we need to make sure that we don't take away from what I see as our critical charge as a group.
Mr. Partridge?
I'm looking at the standalone, and so as we have, standalone projects aren't considered regional for Dr. Cog. And if you really look at E-470 and maybe Northwest Parkway 2, those are standalone. Basically, those are your most perfect form of P3. So my question is, on a project that has, so is that correct, as I say? So P3s basically are not considered, if it's a full P3 project, it would not be considered, it would be considered standalone? It would now fall under our, any of our funding categories? A full P3 project?
I think it would, it could, it could be, for example, US-36 was a P3.
But it wasn't fully P3?
What's fully?
Public-private partnership. So you had a private corporation being as part of the funding mechanism?
Yeah, we do.
Right, it wasn't fully P3 though, right?
So maybe it's an authority versus?
Yeah, I think, that's, that's right, what Deb mentioned.
Smith, go ahead, your comment. Deborah?
I think there might be a distinction between what's an authority, so E-470, Northwest Parkway are authorities that have different funding and different legislation than US-36, which is not an authority. Does that help?
Right, yes, I get the difference, but what I'm trying to do, basically, they are P3 projects.
Director Partridge, if I may, I think the distinction, you know, amongst the authorities that Deb suggests are like E-470 and others, is that we've always considered those in our planning process to be locally funded projects, because they have their source of revenue for their operation and maintenance and construction of projects. Correct me if I'm wrong, right, Steve? I mean, that, so they've never been eligible for federal or state monies as part of our long-range transportation planning, financial planning purposes.
Right, I fully understand that. But the big thing is, they are major regional arterials. So to take it out of the category is one of the challenges. But what I'm getting to is that when you have, because those are locally funded or privately funded, you can almost put it that way, well, that's what a P3 is. So have you, how do we handle projects that have a portion of P3, or that are all fully P3?
Well, they've never, the projects that you mentioned, I mean, those types of projects have never been eligible as part of our planning process, our funding process, it just hasn't been eligible.
But US-36 had partial P3.
Right, but that also has partial P3. Yeah, but it's on a public facility.
And had significant state and federal money.
Associated with, yeah.
That's, I think part of that is that US-36 is a state highway. So because of the federal and the state dollars that are included in it, it is a P3, but it is not an authority, because we get federal funds, and we get state funds, and we get local matching funds out of every community that was along the corridor.
Yeah, I think there's more thought that needs to go into that. There's an odd complexity there, I think we just have to be aware, I don't have it figured out, but I think we have to ask that question. So I think it probably is something to take to the tip to figure that out, because there is that difference when it's an authority, because firstly, they don't receive any federal funding, they're not under federal guidelines, that's another thing. So I see where it's going, but I think we have to ask that question to make sure, maybe there's another factor in there that we want, that we need to be aware of.
Okay, I've got about three more people that have asked to speak, and we're going to be running pretty close to about our time. So if there's anyone else that wants anything, I want to get these three out of the way first. We may not finish this conversation tonight. That's okay. If it doesn't, it doesn't, because we need to make sure that what we're going to recommend to the board has the approval and the recommendation of this body, because you're recommending, this is primarily the work group that's going to take it to the final board decision. I've got Mr. Odericio, Ms. Shockte, and then Ms. Jones. Steve?
Just a clarification, so if we don't expand the definition to include these arterials, they can still be addressed at the sub-region, correct?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm looking at is, instead of expanding the definition of the regional, why don't we just keep it broad, and have those addressed at the sub-region, and make sure that the ratios are covered enough so we can address that. So I can address federal, someone else can address Wadsworth, someone else can address 120th or 104th, or together, we can address like Highway 7, that will go across Adams, Boulder, roof. I mean, like, the way I look at it is, I like the idea of doing it sub-regionally, and I don't see a need for us to expand the definition to include arterials when that's going to better be addressed locally. Then we don't have, you know, like the folks from Superior worried about not being eligible, they'll be able to make more of those decisions at the sub-regional level to address some of those sub-regional issues. I'm hurrying up, sorry, Phil.
No, that was an agreement.
I thought it meant like hurry the hell up, my wife does that to me, when she's like, come on.
That would have been this.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
It's RT.
I think that the conversation about the funding breakdown can be separate from the conversation about which roads to include for regional projects. It makes sense to me to include the, I don't remember the word, but the light yellow ones. To expand the definition, because those are in fact roads that have a regional impact, and maybe there's some projects that could really compare well. Anybody applying to them, for them, will see the amount of money there is, and understand that there's competition based on how well you're addressing regional needs, but I don't see what the disadvantage of including them is.
Ms. Jones?
I'm of the mind, and I think I'm echoing Director Stolzmann's comments, about that, you know, the most important thing that Dr. Cog is, does, is to act regionally and to think like a region, and that's the power of this group. And I think that's why some of us are arguing to have the opportunities to suggest regional projects, because it really emphasizes that. And as we want to put together a transportation system that makes sense across the region, it seems like it would be enhanced by that. I guess I would offer, if, it doesn't sound like we've wrestled this to the ground, if we end up not supporting adding major regional arterials and expanding the definition and the opportunity to think regionally and fund regionally, then I guess I want to piggyback on a comment that Doug Rex made. on a comment that Doug Rex made, then we should incentivize at the subregional level for subregions to look across their borders. And again, Steve and I both have an interest in Highway 7, that crosses our county lines and benefits a number of jurisdictions. There should be an incentive to fund at the subregional level, projects that are effectively regionally beneficial and cross multiple jurisdictions. So that's something to think about. I also wanted just to clarify for Roger, the difference between the tolling authorities that you mentioned and other P-3 projects like US-36 is how they were added to the RTP. For example, the Jefferson Parkway was included in the RTP, RTP only as a privately funded toll road. And so if you're included in the RTP in that way, you're not eligible to receive federal funds through the tip, even though you're part of the RTP. So you would have to go back and amend the RTP and change that in order to change how those funding allocations. So the difference isn't that they're a P-3, it's that they're a privately funded toll road, as it was included and adopted in the RTP.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Smith? Ms. Perkins-Smith, my sorry.
Thank you. You know, as a state agency, this is really an MPO issue, but I was just thinking some parallels, because we deal statewide. And oftentimes, when we talk about regional, it's not just based on capacity, the roads that are moving the most traffic, it's also based on connectivity. So in some of the roadways you actually have shown under your MRA projects, those are more, what I would call regional connectivity, meaning that they go through many, many, many jurisdictions. So if something happened to one of those high-capacity things, that is a very important facility, so it's a regional connectivity. So I just want to share that thought, and that comes from like dealing statewide, we have the same issue. So some roadways are very important from a regional connectivity standpoint, we think of them as regional, even though they don't carry as much traffic as the interstate. So just throwing that out there.
Mr. Sinanik?
Just a question and process as we go through this. From my perspective at least, what I've been looking to is that there will be an evaluation of these that will occur from the staff level, so that when we start to look at both the subregional portfolios as well as the subregionals and the regional portfolio, those will be come back and saying, hey, we've come close to optimizing our dollars as far as, against our focus areas and as well against the metro vision objectives that are related to transportation. And to some extent, whether some things in MRA and included in regional requests or not, to me, I'd love to see some of those collaborative discussions at that subregional level that gives them, and to some extent encourages us, as we were talking about that incentive, to be in a position to collaborate even across subregions on some items. And I don't see it as detracting from our regional discussions, because we're still going to have that when it comes back to the board. And though we may not be looking at the individual projects within a subregion, being able to be in a position to say, our, our subregion has collaborated with another subregion, and together we actually, and I'll use the word score, score better in our portfolio, because we've taken those things into consideration.
Mr. Rex, you have anything to wrap up?
Well, on that, yeah, I mean, I agree. I think what we will provide you, Phil, is the information for you all, the field you have, as perfect information as possible to make that, make those determinations on regional projects and subregional projects and/or portfolios, right? We always thought of ourselves in the regional process as kind, operating staff as kind of the, kind of the CBO, right? That we would evaluate the applications that we get in, to make sure they're legitimate, what they're proposing, and provide those, that information back to you all for, for you to be able to evaluate. Yeah, I'll just leave it there. I know we're short on time.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we've all had an opportunity. I know there's been...
Can I say one more thing, Herb?
Oh, sure, now you want to know?
I'm sorry, Herb, Chairman, real, real quick, on this, there's a few things we didn't get to today, which is fine, but I will, if, Steve, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling.
Yep.
The reason, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that this is in the packet, because it was specifically asked for at the last meeting, and that was the inverse of this 70/30 proportional split amongst the, you know, this region and subregion, that 70%, or sorry, 30% regional, 70% subregional was what was recommended by the TIP Policy Work Group. It was specifically asked at the last meeting that we also provide that inverse. So I wanted you to know that that was in there. So it's 30, so 70% regional, 30% subregional. So that's in your packet for, just, you can peruse that as you like. And the, the other portion of this presentation was some additional slides, some information about Puget Sound Regional Council's process, and we can talk about that more next time. We also included a link in the, in the agenda packet itself to the actual policy framework that, that Puget Sound uses. So, because we had some, I had some requests at the TIP, at the workshop specifically about Puget Sound, so I wanted to provide some additional information. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention tonight. Those of you who are here as part of the P and E group, we will re-adjourn down at Monarch as soon as you can take a quick break and move down there. can take a quick break and move down there.